Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know, I paid for coffee. All right, I'd like to call and meet in order.
I'm doing the actions.
Has there been declaration of public notice?
Yes.
Any issues with the order of business? Okay. Public appearances, I've got one. Beth Schiffer Decker, please come up and sit down in front of the microphone and...
Where's the mic?
Right there.
Oh, is that it?
Yep.
It's 2019.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, hi everybody, I'm Beth Schiffer Decker. I live at 1798 Polly Drive in Sun Flurry. I'm currently in my 16th year teaching second grade and this is my 11th year in the district. I teach at Cottage Grove School. First, I would like to say thank you to all the board members for working with us as teachers and doing what's in the best interest of our kids always. I appreciate you. To show our appreciation and interest in the topic I'll be speaking about, staff members wrote valentines for our board members that we'll be passing out afterwards. I'm here today to advocate for teacher retention, which also means that I'm here to talk about the salary schedule. I recently found a newspaper article from the time I was hired, and at that time in 2008, we hired 29 staff members. Of those 29 people, only three still remain in the district today. Many have left for similar positions in other districts, some of whom I know personally, and when they moved to another district, they received approximately a $10,000 raise at their new district. As it stands, our salary schedule does not seek to retain teachers who have been in the district for many years. Once we're at level three, which happens quickly for newer teachers, there isn't much growth to follow. For example, I have a master's degree, I'm currently in level three, and I was recently accepted into level four, for which I'm grateful. However, since our salaries are public, I recently discovered that several teachers, 25 to be exact, with less years of experience than me, have been paid higher salaries than me. That includes two teachers who only have a bachelor's degree. Two teachers who have nine years less experience than me also make higher salaries than I do. This tells me that in order to attract teachers, we're offering them higher pay than other teachers who have been loyal to this district. If the understanding is that we need to be competitive, then it's imperative that we look into retaining our current staff with a competitive pay structure. Other veteran teachers and I have worked with countless new staff members in our grade levels and buildings. We've worked with new principals, even new superintendents. We've shared our materials, knowledge, and experience. We've worked on many hiring committees, and we've served as coordinators and leaders of committees in our buildings and throughout the district. We've served as trainers for new teachers and for all teachers throughout. I personally have trained teachers in many technology sessions throughout the district. To know that teachers whom have helped to hire and train teachers along the way, that the teachers we're training are making more money than us is disheartening. Good for them for getting the pay they deserve. It's not a competition. However, I have a young family to raise, I have bills to pay just like everyone else, and I can apply for level four, which I did, and that will give me a little bit of a raise, but I'll still be making $6,000 less, even with that raise, than a teacher who has three years fewer experience than me, with a bachelor's degree. If we're negotiating with experienced teachers to attract them to our district, when will you create a structure that's fair for everyone? I make less than every other teacher in the district with 15 years of experience and a master's degree. With teachers who have the same amount of experience, there is a $20,000 discrepancy between what I make on the low end and what another teacher makes on the high end. Twenty thousand. I find that unacceptable, and I refuse to believe that I make any less of a difference in children's lives than others with similar experience. Please work with the MGA to make a salary schedule that will fairly compensate teachers and will both attract and retain veteran teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Susan.
Yes, we're allowed to ask a question.
Yeah.
Discussion. Do you have just a rough idea of how long you took you to put your materials together for your application for level four? Just rough ideas, the pack, whatever.
I'd say I worked for maybe 10 to 15, probably about 15 to 20 hours on it.
And then, did you feel that you had any training or guidance or assistance in getting ready for that application?
Other than asking coworkers, no.
Great, okay, super. That's just what I need to know. Here then, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Yes, I heard that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Approval of consent agenda, I asked for a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information. Do you want to?
Sure. So we do have three recognitions on the agenda tonight. Last week, Taylor Prairie held their great kindness challenge, and on Tuesday, students enjoyed an all-school kindness event. Students moved through four stations in the school, and they showcased and celebrated kindness. It was all week. Families and staff actually brought in non-perishable food items and tortoises that were to show kindness to others in our community. And a group of teachers actually delivered three tables worth of donations to a local Cottage Grove Food Pantry after school. The second one is, we did have 20 high school Model U.N. students travel to Washington, D.C. They did a fantastic job representing Manona Grove at their conference at American University. The students had the opportunity to visit the French and Russian Embassy, where they had a great opportunity to learn about global perspectives in many different and important topics. And then, in honoring of National School Counseling Week, we would like to thank our incredible school counselors, Fred Bartman, Susan Bishop, Jackie Broom, Melissa Burke, Scott Groff, Emily McKee, Corinne Truxell, and Peg Zigman. You can see some great testimonials from families that are also attached.
Thank you. I would just like to note, I should have, that Dan's not with us today because he's at the National Association, what is it, the AASA? Yeah, Association of School Superintendents in Washington, right?
California.
California. Okay. Good for him. All right, board reports, and we've got one, the National School Board Association Equity Symposium.
All right.
Correspondence announcements.
Oh, correspondence.
No, I'm sorry, I did skip correspondence announcements.
Threw me off there. I just want to say that February 24th, we're going to have our, we're going to show 13th, the documentary in the auditorium. It's free for anybody, so hopefully everybody can join us there, and that's part of our community engagement.
And I just had a question.
2:30 to 5:00.
Yeah, if you, if you're, are you publicizing that in the Carroll Independent as well?
No, but I should, that's a good idea.
Yeah, you should, and, yeah, you still have time to get in for that week before. Yeah, because I, there's still a lot, number of people who aren't online or on Facebook who might not see it.
And perhaps WVMO.
And the radio, yep, and whatever else, I think it'd be worth.
Yes.
All right. Susan.
I think the entire board got it, but we received a concern about the fees that community groups pay for using the facilities. So I just was going to mention that it would be helpful to hear if people respond to that or to put that on the agenda so we can get that reported out. I was not aware that there was a fee change and...
Well, Dan responded to the email concerning the fee change, and he says there hasn't been a fee change in the last year.
Right, but we weren't told what the fee is and how, so it would be helpful, I think, for the board to be aware, so that when you get that concern, we know where they get. I know that the senior center and senior friends have always used the high school, and that was outpriced for us, and we haven't done that for three years. So I'm just saying that may be a discussion that we want to have.
Sure, but Dan responded to Mary and the board.
You said there hadn't been a change.
There hadn't been a change, and he said he...
From what to what, from what?
In the last year.
Right, from what?
There had not been a change in the last year.
So could you tell me what that fee is or?
I don't know what the fee is.
That's what I meant, from what?
Well, then...
I think it's important that I'm aware of it.
So the point was, it was the same fee two years in a row, it hasn't been released, right?
Right.
And we approve all those fees, but I don't know what...
And the fees are listed on our website under the facility on each.
Okay, okay.
So, I think in a conversation with Dan upon receiving that email, I think there's going to be some more conversation to explain, we did move to a new software, so there is a lot more accountability than there was before. So that's...
That's great, yeah.
Okay. Next, oh, now, report.
All right. So I went to the National School Board Association Equity Symposium, which was really outstanding, and, you know, it's something I think we should think about maybe sending people to again next year. We've, you know, we've not been active in that organization partly at the national level because our state organization does such a good job, but it was, it's really different when you have people from all over the country coming in, and the speakers were really inspiring, and I thought it was very worthwhile. And I did, I'll talk more about it, the Teaching, Learning, and Equity Committee, but I also shared a PowerPoint with Dan that he thought was helpful too. The opening comments were from a teacher in the Boston Public Schools, and she's only been teaching for 10 years and she was all, she was really something. Just, and she kind of based her talk on, this is kind of interesting, James Baldwin wrote a letter to teachers back in 1963, and she based her presentation on that, and he was talking about the urgency and the revolutionary nature of what has to change, and, you know, of course, here we are, 2019, dealing with the same issue, so, but she was a very effective speaker. They had a lot of things from trauma-sensitive schools, the opioid crisis, mental health things, but the one I, they had, and you can only go pick two of the breakout sessions. But the one I went to that I found really interesting was Keeping the Promise for All Students Strategies to Ensure Equitable Access to Effective Educators out of Missouri, and they had, it was particularly interesting because the main speaker had been a high school math teacher herself and talked about her own experience, thinking that she was dealing with all kids equitably and fairly, and when she started, somebody pointed out that she looked at her numbers, how many students of color ended up in the higher-end math classes, and there weren't many, and how many, so she, anyway, she sort of had her eyes open and began to look at that and really look at the research and work at it. And, you know, what we've heard in all of these presentations that we go to, and whether it's children in poverty, mental health issues, whatever it is we talked about this last week, I think, the whole thing of building relationships with kids comes out as so important, which, you know, you have to think of the structure of the day from a board level, but as far as policy and district practices, there were some clear things where the board clearly communicating the expectation for quality educators leaders to be hired, a measurement system that allows for monitoring variability among schools and teachers, board monitoring of data regarding performance of students and effectiveness, and not, not that they weren't, there was nothing about salaries and tying salaries performance, it's not along that line, but it's really more about professional development, that's what we kind of kept hearing, and assigning students to teachers, making sure that, that teachers have, that some of your stronger teachers in some areas, for example, have different students of varying abilities, and that nobody gets locked into a track with teaching as well, which used to happen, I don't think that really happens in our district anymore. And then, the importance of mentoring, which we know, the importance of meeting and confer, which we do, but asking questions and just a lot of emphasis on making sure that, that our staff is aware of the needs for, you know, of what's needed for equity and moving kids along. And there's a lot more to that than I, that I won't go into right now, but, and then the other one I went to, there was one on social emotional learning, and I didn't stay and I'd got some other stuff, but it was, it was a little more touchy-feely than I thought I was going to get much out of it, so I moved to one on overrepresentation of student subgroups and special education, which is something that our district has struggled with, and we have, you know, we were at one time cited for that, for disproportionate representation. We've not, you know, we're not cited at this point, but that was also very interesting and just following what the federal expectations are of that and sanctions you can end up with if that's an issue for you. So it was really overall just a very informative and inspiring conference, and the only other Wisconsin people I saw there actually were John and Ashley and a few other people from the National State Board, or the State Board rather, and they go every year apparently, but, anyway, it's worth, I'll download more of the materials, that's the good thing, having gone, I can now download the handouts from the sessions I wasn't able to go to, because as usual, there were several in each session I would have liked to have gone to, but it was only a one-day thing, so. Anybody have any specific questions or thoughts on it?
Dean?
I think all that you said there would be, is there any way you could pull together a one-sheet piece of paper that would highlight the kinds of things that a school district ought to be thinking about or doing, and share it with the board and with the committee too?
Possibly, and this, and actually, I could send out this Missouri PowerPoint because really it was very...
Or something like that.
And she cited a lot of the research, from a lot of research had been done in Tennessee and, where else? And they had some, sorry, but it's Tennessee and other states that had, had done a lot of research on, you know, on what, what really works, and it was, it was interesting. So, yeah, I could do that and send the PowerPoint out as well, but maybe send a one-page summary too, so, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is the 2018-19 school calendar. As you know, our calendar's been disrupted by snow and cold and hurricanes and what have you, and we have to add time to the, to the calendar. There's a proposal for making up the time on your, in your, attached to board docs. In particular, March 8th becomes a full day at the high school, and we have a half a day on March 22nd, and then for elementary and middle school students, we add back in April 22nd, it's a full day. And then in addition to that, in the high school, there's a proposal, this, the, we're asking the team to come up with adding minutes to the day to fill up the remaining time. Is there anything else in there of importance?
No, please, so the one thing is, is obviously, as crazy as winter has been, we've closed seven times. Part of the motion that we're asking for is that if there is an additional snow day, we would like to have the ability to add additional minutes instead of creating a day at the end of the school year, and so by approving this motion, it does allow us to move forward to be able to notify families right away instead of waiting to come back to the board. Obviously, if we have a couple more, there will be a whole different conversation, so...
Susan.
Jared, would you do those, so, the material that was on the calendar didn't look totally consistent with the material that was in our update.
Okay.
The sheet, these two sheets that were attached, would you just review exactly who's, who's in school on what days? So on March 8th, it's just high school.
So on March 8th, we will have high school in grade six through eight, and actually, I'll have Lisa come up, she works with the principals.
These are in addition to what we already approved.
That's right.
So, if she might...
Yeah, I looked at it a little bit. So, we have six, eight, so basically, we have six, 12 on March 8th, full day.
So March 8th was originally scheduled to, it's the end of a trimester for elementary, and it was originally scheduled to have high school students in the morning, and that was the only student attendance on that day. It is switching now, the request is we need to bring high school students in for a full day, so they were going to be in for the morning, but now we need them for the entire day, and six through eight would attend also. And then, it will still be for elementary students, a no-student-contact day.
Because when you look at the district calendar that I thought was updated, that was attached, Katie probably knows. It still says early days.
It's a typo, yeah, it's a typo, we're fixing it right now, it's not, it's not published. So there's a typo on the block calendar that has some, some color coordination that still says that that day is a half day, and it's not, it's a full day, it'll be corrected before it's...
Okay, so that's updated.
It's getting updated.
Oh, okay, just checking, because this is what was loaded on board docs.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and I, it looked to me like there was inconsistency, and that's why I thought, there is, if you go through it, you know, if you go through it. So, six, 12 are going to have a full day on the 8th, and then what are they doing on the 22nd? Who's on the 22nd?
So again, March 22nd was originally a non-student-contact day, that's the end of third quarter, so we needed to bring high school students in for the morning. We cannot have that be a full day because, again, end of quarter, there's grading time for secondary teachers on that day. But we also then needed to bring in for, I think it's just, yeah, it's just for the high school on March 22nd in the morning.
Then 4/22 is everybody, full day, right?
4/22 is everybody. And that was originally, again, also a non-student-contact day, but it's being shifted to student contact.
Again, I was just more looking to see who's in school that day because I had two, the documents weren't consistent. That's great, thanks. Jared, the only insert, or Lisa, the only inserts they left for the rest of the year is the one at the end of the year, correct? The 10th, June 10th?
Correct, and in-service may be a slight misnomer there, that really is teachers, you know, ending up their grading and cleaning and packing and some final wrap-up for the end of the year.
So if there, if there were to be more days, I don't want to do that day, but, so we'd have to add minutes, correct?
If we have an additional school closing, which we hope we won't experience, but if we do, that next step would be to add minutes to the, to the school day before we would have to do anything with adjusting the, the end of the calendar.
And when we add minutes, we're adding minutes before and after, or...
Usually just at the end of the day.
The end of the day.
But that's open for conversation. So for example, the high school's having conversation right now about minutes, and they're looking even internally at their passing time, can that be adjusted without having to change the end time? Might not be feasible, the end time, it could be six minutes, eight minutes, it could be a combination of passing time and the end of the day. So there's, Paul, Dr. Boss is having conversations with his leadership team, making some recommendations about how to make up the 360 minutes that need to be adjusted.
Any other questions?
So...
All right, I'd like a motion for approval of the revised calendars presented.
And then, if we approve the revised calendar though, Jared, didn't you say that you were hoping for approval of the minutes as well, so...
Yep.
A motion in the...
So we did put a recommended motion.
Recommend a motion in board docs?
So the, the recommendation includes the ability to adjust it by adding minutes.
I see, okay, got it. I was looking down too low. All right, I move approval of the revised 2018-19 school calendar as presented, including allowing administration to add instructional minutes as necessary to meet the state requirement.
Just a second?
Second.
Move to second, a discussion? All in favor?
Here.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to mention that I, I know how difficult it is to add the time, but the minutes thing, it, you know, I think we have to be incredibly thoughtful as we do that. We have teachers who are parents, we have families with working parents, and we have huge, obviously, transportation issues, so, again, if there's a way to do it within that eight-time period, that would be useful. And, and the other thing that's a consideration, I appreciate that we need to approve this and just get it done fixed, but I do think the minute thing probably should have been separate for approval so that we would know exactly what you're doing, otherwise, we, I mean, it's like carrying two inconsistent documents. It's important that we as a board know what you're doing because we get the phone calls, so as you make those changes, that would be helpful to them.
Well, the collective "we" yes, takes that into consideration. So, for example, elementary, they don't have passing time per se, so that's not something you can adjust. At Glacial Drumland, the passing time is very minimal, I think it's four minutes passing right now, so that's a difficult adjustment. But yes, every, every consideration is really carefully considered to make the least impact on staff, and that's why we have taken as much advantage as possible of switching professional development days to student contact days, to not upset any of the bell schedules as they currently are.
I'm assuming one of the considerations would have to be, plus-ing would be, they'd have to adjust their schedules to fit whatever happened, so, and that's where I think it would seem that it would be less problematic for parents coming at the end of the day than the beginning of the day, so, I mean, because they don't have their work schedules and that kind of thing, and presumably, they already got plans for how their child is dealt with at the end of the day, so, I would think that that makes sense that way. Yeah, I don't, I don't, it, it becomes more of a jumping through the hoop solution to do it that way, I think, because the, the quality of instructional time, you know, that isn't, not so significant, but, but it makes sense when you have this many missed days and you don't have any, you know, better options.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda for action is a, thank you, Lisa, is approval of documents for the, the petition for the annexation of district property into the village Cottage Grove. This is the area that we've purchased, the land that we've purchased in Cottage Grove where, for the new school, where the new school's going to sit, and currently, it's in the town, and this is a request from us to the village to annex it into the village.
That's correct.
It's a petition, but we're the sole property owner, so we're the only name on the petition, right?
That is correct.
Any questions?
So just a quick overview of the process, once you approve this, we will send it to both the village clerk and the town clerk, along with supplying it to the department administration. The department administration has 20 days to review it, obviously, they have a checklist, and then once they approve it, then it goes back for approval, as long as DOA or department administration approves it, then it's pretty much a formality of being approved by both the township and the village. And the cost is $1,150 for us to go through this process, unless the village decides, unless the village requests legal counsel to review it on their end, and then they do have the right to charge us back for that cost, so, but we've had conversations with the village, and they believe everything is set to move forward.
Dean?
Just a question, is, does this bring additional territory into the school district?
No, it does not. So what we're doing is, we're actually taking the 40 acres that we had purchased... we had purchased and annexing it into the village. And the primary reason for doing that is to be able to have city water in sewer versus having an independent well and having a septic tank for a new school, which obviously can be done. However, that is much cost, more costly than having it in the village. So, that's the reason that we're doing it.
So, our, our purpose was to move it from the, from the village and from the town into the village.
Yep.
So, that we could have municipal services.
Correct. And the property south of us is already in the village. And then ours, and then there is conversation about the 40 up on the north end will also be annexed in shortly, whenever that property in our resides.
Okay. Anyone else? I need a motion for approval of executing the proposed annexation petition and authorizing district staff to take all reasonable actions to complete the annexation process. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Motion carries. Next item up is policy 99130. This policy has been delayed for a couple of meetings. All members were present. We, at a last time we took it up, we discussed, we discussed it thoroughly and made some amend, or did not make some amendment, but made some motions for amending it. And that history is in your board docs. So, we have the, the document as it came to us from that last process in front of us. For...
And, and so the motion on the floor is the motion to approve the policy as presented?
Actually, there is.
It's been moved and seconded?
There's, what's that? It hasn't been moved?
That, yeah, that was...
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
The main motion is what we're talking about right now.
That's right. It was, that is correct. It was a motion to approve it. So, discussion on a motion to approve the, the policy 9130 is presented.
This was, the, that policy was, that was January, when was that? January 9th?
Wait, January 9th?
Yeah.
So, yes, ballot says...
Hang on a second. Jeff?
Oh, sorry. I don't want to upset Robert. Yes, ballot says we can, we cannot remove something because it's offensive. And there'll be no wording in there that, that the people who have an appeal can bring it to the board.
That is, that is correct.
But what it says is that we can't remove something solely because it may be unpopular or offensive to some. That was the wording. And yes, there is no specific language regarding an appeal from the superintendent's decision, although we did leave out, it does not say that his decision is final. It simply says it goes to him. He makes a decision. So, it leaves it open.
Susan, can you, can you read the policy as it's written?
Yeah, I'm actually going back to our January 9th meeting where we had policy.
Actually, I think if you, if you, if you click on the link, yeah, you get it.
Yeah, well, you don't, you want to make sure you're getting the revised one, not the li, the current one, because this is different than the current one.
That would be in green, right? 10 through 5?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you need additional?
I believe, I, I got it. Let me know if this is, is right. I'm just reading the part that was in the discussion revolving around, which is if the complaint is not resolved with the director of instruction, the complainant may submit the complaint to the superintendent, period. The superintendent shall address the complaint through any means he, she deems appropriate under the circumstances, including but not limited to consultation with the complaint, complainant, consultation with the director of instruction, consultation with the principal, consultation with the teachers and/or professional staff, and utilization of available resources as he, she deems appropriate. Is that what it, that's correct?
Right. And, yeah, and what we're, we did add some clarity that in general, and this actually is, this policy deals with more than just complaints about instructional materials. So, there is a statement at the beginning saying that ideally, most complaints will be resolved informally between the parents and the teacher, or at most with the principal. And we added, we added a sentence about that here. I mean, just to make it clear that that's, that's the hope, that that's how things will be solved, dealt with here as well. And it also makes clear that instructional materials subject to requests for inspection are limited to core materials. So, ones that have been vetted and have been decided upon by the department as a whole is what we're talking about in this policy. And then there is the sentence that was, so all this green is new, in other words. While some of it's revised from the grid that struck above. But this, the sentence that says concerns about specific instructional materials should be raised first with the classroom teacher, then with the building principal, if necessary, in an effort to resolve the matter informally. If a satisfactory resolution is not reached, requests for inspection of such instructional materials, suggestions regarding instructional materials, or complaints shall be submitted and written to the director of instruction. And then it goes through that process. And we did add at the last meeting to the criteria that the superintendent would consider numbers five and six being the availability of suitable alternatives and the interest of the district in providing an equitable learning environment in school, community for all students and families. So, yeah, the green, basically, the way you see this policy is what we're, we're asking. So, that, that's the, the motion currently on the floor. We approve this.
I would just comment that I, I really believe that, I think it's acknowledged that there is a, a board rule. And I believe that the policy should explicitly state what that is so that there's no confusion about that, so people know what their rights are. And not only that, but that the discussion gives some framework on which the, for which, for the board to handle the matter. Currently, we currently have a policy 9130 in place. So, and I believe that the current policy, because it mentions a board role, although that I, I understand the discussion is a little bit in, in the current policy, the wording and so on, it can be a little problematic. I do believe that that policy, as it currently stands, is superior to this one. And so, because it explicitly mentions a board role. And so, I'm going to be voting against this. Jeff?
I worry that if there isn't a board role in the, explicitly in the policy, that there would be people on the board that would not allow it to come to us because it doesn't say that there's a board role. And that's what scares me about this policy, about putting it in. I think it needs to be in there just to cover ourselves.
Wasn't, wasn't the whole, I mean, I guess I see it in a different way. I, as a board member, I don't want to be involved with, instructional message should be in the classroom with the teacher and the administration team. I just don't see that as a whole.
And I second what he says, too. The teachers make the curriculum. They've been going for years. They should be at their best judgment. And if it's taught, whatever's taught, we need to trust our instructors and what they're doing because that's what they're hired to do.
Are you saying it's up to the teacher?
What's that?
You're saying...
Well, I, I would say that, you know, the reason we have an elected school board is to bring community values to and oversight to, to the district. And if you ask me, when we have complaints about materials, that is in fact, you know, it's a community, it, part of that discussion is a community values discussion. And that is in fact explicitly our role. Now, we all acknowledged, after the last time we discussed that, that a parent or a complainant would have a right, absolutely has a right to bring that to the board. And I, I, there's no argument. And then we can do what, fit what we want. We can say, oh, this is better left to the teachers, whatever. But complainant has, definitely has a right to bring this to the board. We can reject that if we want to. But they have a right to bring any complaint, any discussion, anything that goes on this district to this board. I believe that they should be informed as such. If we want to put in policy that they can't do that, then we should explicitly state it in the policy. If your, your point is, if we can't do that, let's put that in, if that's what we intend, let's put it in the policy. But as long as we agree that they do have a right to come, to us, we should inform them of that. We shouldn't try and secretly take away that right by seeing that they aren't informed about, about the issue.
My, my issue, I guess with that is that it, it takes a, a certain problem solving aspect out of it that they should be working out with the team that's already set up, whether it be the administration team, curricula team, or the teachers, and if they don't acknowledge it, just bring it to the board.
If, if our intention is that they can't bring it to the board, we need to say that the superintendent's decision is final. If that's our intention, then we need to let people know that. Okay? One way or the other. If it's not our intention, if it is not our intention to take away people's right to bring this to the board if they're not happy with the process...
We're not taking away the right.
Then why don't, then we should...
Everybody's standing silent on it. We're not taking away the right.
No. No, but if we're not saying, but if we're not taking away that right, we should explicitly make a statement that they have a right to do that, to bring that to us. And not only that, but we should have a little bit of a framework around that. So, we as a board know how to handle it. So, there isn't a dispute about whether or not they can bring it to us.
So, it, sorry. So, in my seven years, it happened once, right? It happened recently. And, and it took a long time to get to us. But think about had it not come to us, then it would still be festering out there of two factions going against each other because it just, and it, when it came to us, then it ended, right? And then we, we took the blame and the responsibility for anything that happened there instead of let half the people mad at the administrator, half the people mad at the teacher. Like, it just was a big mess until it came to us and everybody got to air their grievances in public and we made a final decision. And then it kind of, it went back away somewhat, mostly. I mean, because...
It should have never came to us.
It should have never came to us, but it did.
Agreed 100%.
I agree 100%. It should have never came to us, but it did. And, and I think everybody involved needed us to make a final decision to end, to end the drama because there were so many people that were so mad at everybody else. And if it, if it would have just sat there, we would have had no ruling on this and just let Dan's decision final. I think there'd be a divided community right now.
Well, first of all, you say Dan's decision. In reality, there was an entire committee created. It's actually the committee's decision.
Which, which, hang on a second. Which in our current policy, we would have. Under this policy, we may or might not have. But ultimately, I think the decision has to come down to the elected people who are accountable to the community, if people want to pull it that far. I agree 100% that solving this at a lower level, solving this at the first line is the way to go. And we should figure out how to make sure that that happens. Question is though, what happens if it comes, ultimately, in the end, the elected officials who are of responsibility to the public, you know, the buck stops here. And not with the superintendent. The buck needs to stop here. And if it's going to do that, we need to inform people on their rights. And I think we also need to put just a little bit of structure on it so we can do it.
I just want to clarify a point or two. So, you called on Eric and Eric has the floor. So, until you basically address yourself as the speaker, and that's identified, even with other people having their hand up, it's not appropriate under our rules and our policy for the, the board president to respond with their opinion to every board member who speaks that may not agree with you. So, I just think we need to be cautious about that. You're good about not letting us do that. So, we need to all be...
Well, I, I can also take the floor.
You can take the floor.
Hang on, specifically under Robert's rules for, for small committees, which is chapter 19, which is what we are, small boards and committees, which are what we are working under. I, this discussion, you know, we don't all have to stand up to take the floor. Eric had a point ahead. I wanted to respond to his point.
The rule that you follow right now is that you do not allow us to speak unless you have recognized us. So, that has to go for both parties.
Yes.
Whatever law you use, just use a consensus. They have a right.
And I, I don't explicitly say I recognize us. Anyone else with a statement? Susan, you had your hand up?
That's okay.
Okay. Dean?
I, I share your concerns about explicitly stating to a citizen member that they would have a right to appeal to the board. I think, I also agree that goes without saying, too. But a citizen member doesn't always know that unless that is, is expressed. My concern with the policy is that there's not a, that there's not a, an area in the policy that legitimates a teacher or a group of teachers from transferring the responsibility for the resolution of the issue from them as individuals or groups of teachers up to chain of command. And, and I feel that, I feel that many of those teachers feel that the burden of this was with them for far too long.
Well, I, I don't know that I agree with that last part in that it makes it clear that if it isn't resolved at that level between the teacher and the principal, then it goes to the director of instruction. And at that point, then it is incumbent on our administration to step in, which they did this time, I think some time at last before we realized what was going on. Yeah, we don't want to get in a situation where teachers are feeling harassed by parents. And that's part of why we have this set up the way it's set up.
I, I think as in the, as in the case with going to the board, it is implicit that that would happen. But I think that there needs to be some kind of provision for the, for a teacher or a, in this case, it was a group of English and social studies teachers that felt at some point very, very harassed on that, on that issue. And, and the, and they need to be able to say to their principal or director of instruction or superintendent that you, you need, this needs to be removed from our area because it is interfering with our work and responsibility someplace along, along the line. That, I'm saying, what I'm saying is a lot longer than, than a, than a brief line in there because I, I think probably many members of the board had some teachers talking to them. But I was asked to go to a meeting with, I think, six or seven teachers of English and social studies. And it was very clear to me that, that their, the intellectual and emotional burden that they were carrying and the feeling of being harassed for back to school nights and that sort of thing is very real. I think everyone that we talked, did that. But at least collectively, they felt that they needed to, that, that the complaint was slow to move up the chain of command for a resolution. That's my wording.
Just, hang on a second, Susan. Can I just see if I understand what you're saying, which is that the policy should have a mechanism by which a teacher can push the issue to up the chain?
Can formally, can formally voice that individually or collectively?
And currently, it may move up the chain, but there's no way for a teacher then to push it up the chain. And you're asking for a mechanism to do that. Is that...
Without, without expressing the feeling that they're not fulfilling their professional responsibilities, they need to be able to do that. And that's, that's not there. And I'd like to have that in there. I'm sorry, I wasn't here when it was originally debated.
No, thank you.
Well, I guess I think it is there because it, it lays out that it goes to the teacher, a teacher and principal, and then the director of instruction. The problem was, and that's the same process we essentially had before, the, and I, I don't know that, I think the problem was a communication one, I think. I mean, I think as soon as the administration was aware that, and they may have to be made aware. I mean, the reality is you can put all, all, you could, they, I don't, I'm not sure how you would write that in policy. That's, I'm struggling with that a little bit. But even if you did that, I'm not sure how you'd write in that the parent shall not continue to complain. I mean, I just don't know how you'd do that. I think, I think what has to happen is the teacher needs to make their principal aware as soon as that happens. And that principal needs to talk to the superintendent. And they need to get, have communication immediately and say, this is not who you communicate with from now on. You communicate with me. And that's, we did that. But I agree with you. It took way too long and it was a miserable situation. And I, but I think that putting language in there would be very awkward. It would sound pretty negative toward the complainants, I think, too. And... And I mean, I'm trying to envision a way you would do that to keep happening, from happening what happened this last time. I think that, I think we just have to be better about handling these things more quickly. And this process is kind of cleaner and...
That's why I'm not prepared exactly tonight to put that language in because I do think it's difficult. But I, I think whether it comes in on that or administrative rule or something like that to follow up. But I, I was very, I myself was moved and shaken by the fact that here were re-experienced professional teachers, six or seven of them in the room, that really didn't want to go to back to school night because they continued what they felt was harassment.
Yeah, I would agree. And that's why I think we try to simplify the process and make it cleaner. And that's what this does. So I think I would like to think it helps.
I think it's better than, far better than what we had, but I, I think it needs another round of work or something.
Yeah, I'm ready to vote tonight.
We haven't touched on offensive either. How are we going to touch on...
We touched on it last time.
I know, but...
That amendment failed, so.
Susan?
Dean, I think what happened was we actually were in this process and it says, as Susan said, starts with the classroom teacher, then with the building principal if it's not informally resolved at that level. And then if it's not, a resolution's not reached at that level, then it goes to the director of instruction. And one of the major timing points where the harassment appeared to be affecting the teachers was while it was in the committee. So the administration was in fact following this process. The process was being underlined by the...
The process was much, much before that. Much before that.
I don't agree on some, okay.
I, you know, to Dean's...
Did you vote on it?
To Dean's point, I guess I would, I would comment that I think language that would say that a teacher has a right to refer the issue to the principal or whomever at a certain, at some point, I think that could be very helpful to supporting our teachers.
It's already pretty much in there.
No, it doesn't say, it doesn't say that the teacher can say to the principal. It does not say the teacher can say at some point to the principal, this, please deal with this, I can't handle it.
You know, I think there's even another policy that might talk about the fact that, well, I, maybe it was the same one. But I think the fact that it says, that it lists this process shall be raised first with the classroom teacher, then with the building principal. So as soon as the building principal is aware of it, he or she needs to be aware that the, that this controversy is going on with, among those parents and that teacher and stay on top of it. And also get help from the superintendent if necessary. So I just don't think there's anything more that needs to go in here. I think this is fine and I'm ready to call the question.
Yeah, well...
So I'm like, I'm asking you to call the question.
All right.
The question is two thirds.
That's right. The question has been called, all in favor of proceeding, proceeding in the main motion?
Roll call.
Signified by signing aye. Roll call votes starting with Dean. This is just a motion to call the question.
To vote.
To vote.
Yes, aye.
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 I think it doesn't matter.
This is...
I guess if everybody's talked about it enough, I think you said, I mean...
All right. Motion carries, moving, now we're in on, we're going to have a vote on approval of the policy as presented.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote starting with Josh.
I think that the...
Uh-uh.
I can still say why I'm voting, yes. I'm voting no because I think the last time was a mess and I think it was mishandled up and down the line. And I think that this doesn't fix it. And I think not putting board in there is a major mistake.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Well, the policy's approved. Okay. Okay, we'll take a, let's see, what's budget, you need a five minute break. Let's take a five minute break.
They do the trick, don't they?
They do.
Yeah. I think they're better than you. My mother-in-law said that, it's like she gets really...
I just look like a tickle.
I tickle, yeah. She likes those better.
So, no, they don't tell us that it's close and making all of us, it's always one of the problems. Otherwise, they put them in the...
Yeah, well, I don't want, I don't want...
No.
Yep.
Sorry.
I know.
So I'm just telling you about...
Of course, they think it's...
Yeah.
Parents is the leader.
Yeah.
I saw you just go out there.
Yeah, that was a...
That worked for you for three times.
Yeah.
I went to a really good...
I had a high...
That's guaranteed that teachers don't get said.
So I'm trying to craft a story.
Because the...
We're just, we're always afraid of the superintendent. There'll be no one saying...
So that's what we're going to talk about.
Thanks, Eric.
We were reporting home, just to work.
Eric.
They might be here in the end of the line for that. And other committees aren't, and so my ass is proud of that.
But there are going to be people talking.
Andrew, um, has been...
I can actually send you the speaker.
I was wondering if they were going to have...
And I can actually send you the speaker.
Well, right.
No, they don't.
And I can actually send you the speaker.
I know already, conjunctions are...
Well, that's a totally probably separate conference.
I was wondering if they were going to have...
No, they have a couple of...
Nope.
All right, Jeff.
You still be in the meeting?
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 No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, they're... They have a couple of characters here. I was wondering if they were gonna have, or if they were unable to do that. If I can leave one there. No, it just goes into our general. So when we did the operational referendum, we did the operational referendum to raise our revenue limits. It wasn't like a building project where it would be in a segregated fund or a separate pot of money. So it ultimately just goes into our general budget. And when we had went out and talked about the operational, we had identified some areas that we would like to fund, and that has been able to do that. However, each year it's a little different based on priorities that are set by not only the board, but administration and staffing, and if it comes back from the personnel committee on salaries or benefits, and then where we're at.
But when we promoted that, we indicated that, what was that, 2.5, 2.6 million?
2.6 million.
2.6 million, that we had categories of technology and so forth. There, I think there were five or six categories. And in the first couple of years, there, you kind of kept it up consistently. I would urge you to kind of, could you bring that up to date year by year? If you could bring us up to how we've spent that, some on salaries and technology and, you know, and so forth. Because I think, because it seems to me that down the pipe, we may have need to have a small operating referendum sometime in the future. I don't know. But it would be nice to know that when we did that and we targeted those areas, that we came close within a few percentage points of fulfilling what we said we were going to do, because the next time, I think we'll probably, if there is a next time, we would want to be able to do the same thing. And, you know, for me, I'd like to have that, not only a footnote, I'd like to have it be a headline, that here's why we do it, because we could justify this, and we delivered, you know, plus or minus a few points. And I had very good feedback on the first couple of rounds, two or three rounds of that, but it's kind of faded away in other areas of your work.
Right. There's definitely been conversations internally, and how do we continue to communicate the operational referendum, and how do we use, you know, that common language as we move forward of the operational referendum, sunsetting, you know, after it being approved for five years, with just approving a building referendum, and how do they overlap, but making sure that, obviously, $2.6 million is a significant amount. It allowed us to do a lot of things that we did have to, you know, we, I mean, we moved, we went to the referendum because we were experiencing about an $875,000 deficit, so we did not have to have any reductions, but it also allowed us to do some other things because it increased our revenue limit, our capabilities of collecting revenue to drive our budgets. So we've been having some of those internal conversations, and we'll definitely continue to do that.
I'm just saying that there was good response to that, you know, here's what we said we were gonna do, and we do it. And I don't have, I don't think it has to be within $1.98 of that, but we ought to show, you know, how we did that. And because some of those areas probably came directly out of that area, not out of others.
Okay, cool. Point well taken.
Because, you know, someplace along the line, I think, depending on how budgets, state budgets go, that we may be having to go to our public again.
Correct.
Well, as you create your budget, I mean, we'll get Governor Evers' proposed budget on the 28th, but given all the talk about they may ignore it and go from base, how do you deal with that as you...
Yep. So we've been having lots of conversations between schools within Dane County, in addition working with PMA, who is our financial advisor and works with us with forecasting, because obviously, they obviously work with a lot of schools across the state. And just even talking to different schools, we're all over the board, you know. You know, there are some that are taking the approach that we have the commission coming in at about 200 or so, and believing that that's what we're gonna get at least from the governor. Others are coming in and saying, yep, that's a starting point, that doesn't mean that's gonna happen, so they're using $100. So really, that's what's gonna be challenging, and so we're just gonna have to try to, you know, work through seeing what that budget looks like and what the chatter becomes, and then keeping everybody abreast of that. But we do believe, you know, it's going to go back to, I think, back in 2009, 10, you know, we didn't have a state budget until almost the middle to close to the end of October. And that's, you know, where the tricky part is, so. And K-12 education obviously is a focus in the upcoming governor's budgets, which is great news, however, we just have to see what that looks like. And the governor also has the ability for a line item veto. So are we gonna see the governor's budgets even being worked off of, or like you said, start from fresh and work their way up? I mean, we've heard multiple conversations that obviously, planning that if you're striking a few words and combining a few words, that's easy. So if we start zero, we ward it in a certain way, that prevents, you know, the governor from doing certain things potentially, so.
Yeah, it's difficult. He can't add money, unfortunately.
Right.
Block, which I don't...
So, yeah, so I mean, not, I mean, we're not for sure, because it's gonna definitely be a unique situation, especially after we saw what happened during the lame duck session, something that hasn't been precedent in the history of the state of Wisconsin. So we're not for sure what it's gonna really look like when it comes to the state budget.
Okay.
But we will definitely be bringing forward some assumptions for you guys. If it's not the next meeting, it will be the first meeting in March to show you sort of, when we make these assumptions on our revenue limits or per pupil, this is how much additional revenue we get, and how that potentially plays out when you're looking at other aspects of the budget.
All right. Anything else? Item two, facilities planning update.
So there's actually been a lot of activity going on in the district, and we did put in onboard docs a list of six things that are going on. Please note that we continue to update that. I think it's going to be exciting when, at our next board meeting on the 27th, we do have Findorf and EUA coming to talk about, give an update on the design and construction process, and to be able to give answers. We will have the visionary, we have invited the visionary team to be able to come and give you guys some history about what they went through, what they've taken away from the process, and really, they've been the driving force of what this conceptual plan will look like. However, on the last week, the last couple of weeks, EUA and Findorf have been able to walk through each of the buildings with the principals to identify that renovation side of our referendum. We've been really focused on the new three through five building, and getting that moving along with the visionary team, and getting some conceptual ideas out there. So now we're moving into that renovation, because obviously, the new school, the new visioning, it should be driving some of those renovations, so, you know, some of that neat new things that we're seeing in education that will be part of a new school. We want to try to figure out how we can potentially embed that into our existing schools, along with obviously our maintenance areas. We, EUA is sending out some RFPs to get some geothermal conductivity in the new area of the school, so we can look at if it's the right move to get geothermal at the new school. We're working with soil borings to be done to identify where that school, the school could be located at, and that should be done by the end of February. One of the other things that was part of the referendum was the MG21 expansion, so that work is being scheduled, and we're moving forward with this summer. We, Findorf and EUA will be submitting the plans to the city of Manona here the week